Okay, it's a little bit after seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the Johnson City Council Meeting number 25-18 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that we have in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up. If you are here for an item that is not on the agenda, you will have an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance time? Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No amendments this evening, Mayor.
Uh, council, any changes to the agenda? Saying none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in... Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, we have one scheduled public communication this evening, and that is a proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd Constitution Week. So... It's Kathy, right?
Yeah.
Kathy, why don't you come on up?
Well, I think this is the second one. Yes. So Kathy, you're a member of the Daughters of American Revolution. Why don't you explain what your organization is?
So I'm a member of the Canthood Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. We're a living society, and we have a patriot, actually, who's my seventh great-grandfather, fought the American Revolution. So our mission is historic preservation, education, and patriots. So Kathy, you made a request for this proclamation last year, and you just sent me an email last year. And I'm going to be a representative, so I'm really pleased to be able to provide this proclamation to the city council. I will read it. This is a proclamation of the Johnson City Council Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Amendment. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations to commemorate this occasion. And whereas public law 1915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, all in ear and mouth, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Johnson, Iowa, would hereby proclaim the winners of September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals and frameworks of the Constitution Act of 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the discarding of our remedies, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness whereof I hereby grant you, it's up on hand, the city with steel of the City of Johnson, being fixed as 15th day of September 17th, 2025, and have signed it. Is there anything else you want to say about the Constitution of the United States of America? It is. So the 17th is Constitution Day, and then we celebrate for a whole week. Every year, it's always September 17th through the 23rd. And our chapter, Canthood Chapter, D.A.R., will be hosting for honor of the founding of America, the American Revolution Experience Traveling Exhibit at the Gold Star Museum, and that starts October 14th. So it's a national event coming from the battlefield of trust and the National Society,
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that
so you'll want to make a point to get there.
is not on the agenda? Anybody on? And your...
Can I just, real quick, sitting in the audience this evening is Sheena Sines.
That word is getting out. Where could the council find out information about that?
She's the new Admin Assistant for the Fire Department.
It should be on the museum website, here shortly, and it'll be wrapped in news and
I'm going to get a feel of how you guys work.
Okay, well, don't grade us too harshly.
heard on the broadcast. If you wanted to send that information to me, I'll make sure it's distributed.
Thank you for being here this evening. Okay. Moving on to public hearings, we have one public hearing this evening, and that is to Very good. Well, I'll invite the council down. Kathy also serves on the Gold Star. consider Resolution Number 25-225, approving and authorizing execution of a forgivable
Yes, I do. I see Kathy off the month of Gold Star. Yes. Oh, did you?
loan agreement bind between the City of Johnson and J4 North LLC.
I've got three days.
Thank you, Kathy. But I heard much. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:11.
Thank you.
Nope, it's not on. You've got to mean it, Ethan.
All right, there we go. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. The resolution before you here tonight is to approve and authorize a forgivable loan agreement with J4 North LLC in the amount of $60,000. J4 North is represented by Mike Johnson, the developer behind a proposed 4,700-square-foot medical office building in West Park, along Northwest 100th Street, out by the Water Tower, has a total proposed investment of no less than $2,060,000, and the creation and maintenance of 14 jobs. The initial incentive on this project was requested for up to $100,000 under our base incentive program, which typically offers a 50% TIF rebate for five years. This project is located in our Northwest 100th Street urban renewal area, and the original TIF district established in that URA, which is scheduled to sunset in 2028, 2029. This kind of made it a little more complicated, because the full five years are not available for a traditional rebate structure like our other development agreements are. So staff identified the possibility of offering a shorter-term forgivable loan to the developer in lieu of the traditional rebate schedule. The city has offered forgivable loans to projects of similar value and scope in the past. One key difference I'll highlight with this loan, however, is that it includes just a three-year forgivable period with $20,000 or 33% forgiven annually, rather than a typical five-year period, just due to the TIF district sunset date. We calculated the offered amount of $60,000 by projecting 50% of the annual increase in property taxes generated, commonly known as the TIF increment, over a five-year period, and applied a net present value discount rate of 6%. I'd also like to note that this developer has moved very quickly, and they got ahead of us a little bit. They've obtained a council-approved site plan with architectural elevations that are included as an exhibit in this agreement. We did appreciate their flexibility on working through that with us, because we had to get creative with this particular project. But we feel we've met the developers' needs, and they will deliver a high-quality project for the city. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Council have any questions? Saying none, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Saying none, close the public hearing at 7:14. We have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-225.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mayor, just, I would like to, if possible, I just want to commend city staff for their foresight and their problem-solving on this matter. I think it's an outstanding demonstration of the really tireless work that you guys do to not only keep track of when some of these agreements sunset and different things along those lines, but also trying to make sure that we still can provide opportunities for businesses that want to grow our community. And this is a perfect example of while a standard TIF agreement would have been more ideal, I think more familiar to all of us, the reality is it wouldn't have worked in this situation, and I really applaud you working so well and then having those conversations with that business, and I'm excited to vote yes. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I would just wholeheartedly agree with the comments from Councilmember Burkhart. Good work on this, so thank you.
Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
I do have some discussion.
Okay.
I didn't see this earlier, or else maybe I would have taken it off the Consent Agenda. Item Q, Consider Approval for the Big Green Umbrella Media Contract. It's interesting that we just had a workshop discussing budget, and here is something that we've done since 2014, and these are the kind of areas that I would just like to point out to staff that maybe, in lieu of the fact that I get the weekly newsletter electronically, and then I do get the paper spread in the mail, but it's all the same information, maybe this is a place where we should be looking for savings. Perhaps I... The other part that could be a problem is, I totally support the Big Green Umbrella Newsletter that is every weekday, and if we stop buying their services, they might have to, you know, stop being such a full-service newsletter. So I know there's some benefit, you know, short-term savings, but in the long term, will it serve us? I don't know. I would just, I just wanted to highlight the item Q, that these are the places where, just because we've done it before and we've done it every year, maybe we look at it and say, do we really need all of these services? That's my only comment, Mayor.
Good comments, point well taken. Any other discussion?
I think this is a follow-up to that. It's a little confusing to me on this item, and the recommended action says approve the contract for 2025, 2026, and then it's a 12-month contract, so I'm not sure when that starts and when it ends. And I know we do talk about this in the budget season, so that's an opportu... I mean, I know that when we review, I don't know if it's the Communications Department budget, I think this is an item that's part of that.
Yeah, so if, in the contract, it starts November, so it runs through November through October.
Okay. So in essence, we're contractually obligated, this would contractually obligate us through October of 2026.
I believe so, yes.
But is when we do our regular budget process next winter and spring, that will provide an opportunity to say, is this something we should continue to do after the October expiration, in theory, right?
In theory, and I certainly take Councilmember Martin's comments seriously. I think it's a good item to point out. I think this is one of those things, though, obviously, people come at different places, and, you know, we don't have everyone in our community, they don't all have email. And so certainly, if you want to hit every population, you do have to try and use other various modes of communication. Certainly, Janet could speak a lot more elegantly on this than I can, but, you know, this is just one of our outreaches, to try to go to and meet the needs of our community. But the point's well taken.
Understood. With that discussion, we have had, we do have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? If not, Cindy, vote, please.
Member ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the Nonconsent Agenda, item 7A, Consider Resolution Number 25-231, amending the scheduled fees for the Johnson Grimes Metropolitan Fire District by adding a lift-assist fee. Chief.
Evening. Mayor members of council, what you have before you tonight with the lift-assist fee request is a recommendation that was approved by the Fire Board to amend the scheduled fees to add a lift-assist fee to assisted-living facilities, nursing homes, and memory care facilities, and that fee would be $500. I'd like to give some context to what we're asking here. I have been involved in this conversation for the better part of five years here, not only in the metro area, but nationally, as we have seen these lift-assist requests steadily increased, increase. And so we've been a little bit somewhat reactive in the metro area when it comes to looking at additional fees. But to give more context to this, is when we're talking about, we're talking about non-emergent calls for service that come through our dispatch center. So our dispatchers are trained to do, to use what's called Pro-QA. They have a series of questions that they ask, and once they deem there's no medical complaint, or there's no injuries associated with what's being requested, it's a non-emergent response. And so we are responding to these facilities with paramedics and EMTs and ambulances and fire trucks who provide advanced life support service to these facilities. And so what happens from a resource allocation is when those advanced life support resources are responding to these non-emergent calls for service, they effectively are out of service, unavailable to respond to true emergencies in our community. And so what we're, what we're looking for is a change in behavior, because I have personally talked to facilities, and they've changed their policies, and they're having staffing challenges as well. And so truth be told, that we are augmenting some staffing with our personnel. And so there's additional risk that comes with it when we start looking at injuries that associated with these lift-assists that our personnel may sustain and overtime cost to backfill those type of injuries. So we are certainly wanting to be really good partners and work with our facilities here in our community, but we want to be proactive and change the behavior before it starts to get out of control. And I say that because I know some of my colleagues across the country have had to look at other alternative means to deal with that growing need. So if this is approved by our council tonight, we would become the third city in the metro area to approve this lift-assist fee, and you will certainly see others. I was actually working on this at my previous employer before I came over, so it is certainly a need, and I am certainly recommending that the council approve this amended fee to our fee schedule.
So Chief, so make sure that I understand what we're, what we're talking about here. This is a situation where our fire department district gets a call to come to one of our nursing facilities here. The individual doesn't have a medical condition. They may need help getting out of bed to sit in their chair to watch television, something like that. And so they're calling our firefighters and our emergency responders to come and just help them get out of bed and move to their chair.
Absolutely. Very low-acuity calls for services is what we're talking about.
And that, that should be something their own staff should be equipped to do.
Correct. These facilities, they have the staff, they have the lifting resources and tools to take care of their clients. And so one thing I do want to talk about, if our personnel, when they respond and they do that assessment, because we always ask them, hey, make sure that we're taking care of our residents and do that general impression, and if they deem that they need to do a set of vitals, at that point, it's changed. It's a patient at that time, so they've got permission to do a set of vitals. In that situation, there's no lift-assist fee associated with the care for these folks.
Any other questions or comments, council?
So I appreciate, Chief, and we had an email discussion back and forth earlier today, and I appreciate your feedback on that, to kind of clarify, because you, you, and as part of the documents that you had included, you had provided, what document that I thought was really helpful, sort of providing a history of facilities inside the district that could be impacted by the fee, call history, the type of incident. A lot of them are falls, so they are broader than, I think, just the, just the one example that was cited, but, but they, but they are ones which the, where there's a determination that there isn't an emergent situation. And so if, but if it was determined that there was some sort of need to do the vitals or whatever, then that changes the situation, and so I appreciate you helping to clarify that for me earlier today, and I appreciate also all the additional, the background information you provided in support of the request, so thank you for providing that.
Any other questions, council? Saying none. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-231?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, Consider First Reading of Ordinance Number 1143, amending ordinance... Wow. Ordinance is 487, 733, 790, 847, 953, 997, and 1103, and providing that general property taxes shall no longer be divided on certain property located with Beaver Creek, within the Beaver Creek Urban Renewal Area in the City of Johnson County, Polk, State of Iowa, removing Amendment Number One area from division of taxes. Josh?
Yeah, Mayor, on the word salad there.
Well, I saw all those numbers, and I thought, what do I do with all those numbers?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll make this simpler than the title or subdecline. Previously, the council had approved removing some area, urban, some area within our Beaver Creek Urban Renewal Area, and what this ordinance would be doing is keeping consistent the TIF district with that urban renewal area. When you think about urban renewal area and TIF, urban renewal area is kind of like the foundation, and then we usually overlay a TIF district over that. Right now, we have a little area that is not consistent, and the TIF district is overhanging in an area where there's no foundation for analogy. So this is right-sizing the TIF district per Polk County, is taking out a handful of lots in the Beaver Creek area, some of them along 86th Street, and we would then stop collection of TIF for these particular lots at the end of this year. In order to meet the Polk County deadline, council would need to consider waiving the third reading. Council would need to consider waiving the third reading for a deadline that we need to meet with Polk County. So if tonight was a vote of support in October 6th, and if council was willing to do that on October 6th, we'd be successful in getting this in compliance with the county and state code. Happy to take any questions.
Josh, can you tell me what, what is currently on these lots? Is this a business? Is this a parking lot?
These are mainly commercial businesses on 86th Street. I don't have a map up here that I can tell you. I can also include a map.
You like maps, like, really like the maps.
I can include a map in the second reading, or send it out to you directly after this, happy to do that.
I just, you know.
Yep.
If you could have it for the second reading, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. This, this consideration is really keeping us in compliance as we need to be. I'll get you a map.
Any other questions for Josh? If not, do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1143?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart? Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to City Administrator Staff Comments.
Mayor and Council, two quick updates this evening. First of all, Ron Shipper is retiring officially. He's been with the city in the Johnson Grimes Municipal Fire District for 21 years. His open house will be on Friday, September 26th, from 2:00 to 4:00, so all of you guys are encouraged to attend that. And additionally, I did send out an email today about a community meeting that we'll be hosting. As you are all aware, the Johnson Chamber has decided to step back from leading Green Days, which they've organized since 1996, and response, we're holding this community conversation on Tuesday, September 30th, at 5:30 at the Crown Point Center to discuss the future of the event. It's really an opportunity for the community to share ideas, explore possible new approaches, and see if there's anyone interested in forming a new organizational group to lead it. I think it's really important to note that, you know, if we don't find a new group that wants to step forward and lead it, likely by the end of October, Green Days likely would not take place in 2026. Happy to answer any questions. I know we did send the email out to probably about 30 different individuals that have had past connections volunteering with the groups. I think we got it out to a pretty broad group today, so.
But I would, I would just suggest that if any of the council members have other individuals in mind that they think might want to be part of this conversation, you know, get their email addresses to Mike, so he can make sure that the email goes out to them as well.
Or certainly, you have the email, too, because it was sent out to the council. Please feel free to forward that on, and I know Communications will work on getting information out on social media channels about it. That's my updates. We have some other updates yet from staff, so.
Other updates? Okay.
Just needed to circle back to the item we skipped on the work session agenda, because it's timely. So this is related to the sewer connection district fees for the annexation area, the area along... Not, do we have a motion to approve second consideration of ordinance number 1141?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy Voat, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D, consider second consideration of ordinance number 1142, amending the City of Johnston revised ordinances of 2007 by amending chapter 92, water, section 92.02, rates for service.
No changes on this one and no additional public comment.
Council, any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve second consideration of ordinance number 1142?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy Voat, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E, consider approval of claims in the amount of $2,163,648.47.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy Voat, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments.
Mayor and council, two quick updates this evening. First of all, Ron Shipper is retiring officially. He's been with the city in the Johnson Grimes Municipal Fire District for 21 years. His open house will be on Friday, September 26th from 2:00 to 4:00. So, all of you guys are encouraged to attend that. And additionally, I did send out an email today about a community meeting that we'll be hosting. As you are all aware, the Johnson Chamber has decided to step back from leading Green Days, which they've organized since 1996. In response, we're holding this community conversation on Tuesday, September 30th at 5:30 at the Crown Point Center to discuss the future of the event. It's really an opportunity for the community to share ideas, explore possible new approaches, and see if there's anyone interested in forming a new organizational group to lead it. I think it's really important to note that, you know, if we don't find a new group that wants to step forward and lead it, likely by the end of October, Green Days likely would not take place in 2026. Happy to answer any questions. I know we did send that email out to probably about 30 different individuals that have had past connections volunteering with the groups. I think we got it out to a pretty broad group today, so.
But I would, I would just suggest that if any of the council members have other individuals in mind that they think might want to be part of this conversation, you know, get their email addresses to Mike so he can make sure that the email goes out to them as well.
Or certainly, you have the email too because it was sent out to the council. Please feel free to forward that on. And I know communications will work on getting information out on social media channels about it. That's my updates. We have some other updates yet from staff, so.
Other updates? Okay.
Just needed to circle back to the item we skipped on the work session agenda because it's timely. So, this is related to the sewer connection district fees for the annexation area, the area along Highway 141 and Highway 415. Included on that agenda, there were two, so we, we had a discussion back in July where you gave pretty clear direction on you were comfortable with the connection district and the sewer user fees being increased in that area. What's on, what's attached to that agenda is actually that direction in ordinance form, so two separate ordinances, one that would establish the connection district fees and one that would establish the extra surcharge that would go on sewer bills. Staff is recommending, if you remember at that time, we looked at a range for per-acre fees ranging from 5,500 per acre to 6,500 per acre. Based on your discussion and staff's review, we're recommending starting at the 5,500, which equates to a, on the sewer user fees, that equates to a $1 service availability increase and a 54 cent increase per 1,000 gallons of sanitary sewer. And so, all that, I don't have it pulled up here, but all of that math is included in the presentation that PFM did. So, what we'd like to do is start, the connection district does require a public hearing, and so we'd like to start, we'd like to set the hearing at your next meeting, and we'd consider first consideration of both ordinances at your second meeting in October. So, just wanted to make sure you've seen these in ordinance form. If you have questions, concerns, anything doesn't look, look right, please let us know so we can get those cleaned up before we get notices sent out.
Council, any questions for Dave?
I just want to make sure I understand it. So, it's kind of a funding mix approach.
Funding mix, yes.
So, a connection fee of $5,500 per, on a per-acre basis?
Correct.
And then, and so that'd be part of the mix. And then, the other part would be a fee increase for the, for the customers inside that district.
Correct.
They would pay an extra dollar. Is that a, is that a, is that a per month?
Per month on the availability. So, the sewer fees, there's an availability fee and then you pay for how much you use. So, it would be an extra dollar on the availability fee. And then, the rates would have a 54 cent surcharge on top of the normal established rates.
Okay.
And collectively, the goal is over the next 30 years between those two funding, we would recollect the $19 million plus or minus that we spent on the project plus interest.
And the 19 million is just for these, the sewer?
That's just the sewer part of it, correct.
And you, I know you had attached a map that kind of showed this impacted district. Does this, is, this district builds kind of a, kind of the main trunk line? So, that trunk line is sufficient to cover that entire area?
Yes. I mean, not to say that we may not be asked to put in a smaller piece here or there to connect from point A to point B, but that trunk line will serve that entire area subject to logical development. So, sewer is going to have to branch off, development's going to have to branch off of that.
It's developer-driven.
And that, and that map, for everyone's clarity, goes well outside of our city boundaries. It collects everything that could drain into this sewer and includes areas in which we have the ability to annex. So, we, we dance around the area where we've had an agreement with Granger, for example. So, not to say if that agreement changed in the future, that area couldn't be expanded, but this maximizes everything under today's knowledge. Thank you.
Dave, I see in your notes here that you have contacted, contacted property owners and interested parties.
I'll do that tomorrow. I have the email drafted.
Oh, okay, okay.
I decided to wait to make sure that if you were comfortable with the 5,500 starting, I'll actually include that specific information in that email because I had it drafted very generically, so.
And so, then my question is going to be, are you going to let them know when the public hearing is?
Yes.
Great.
Yep, yep.
Great. Council, any other feedback for Dave? Are we all comfortable with him proceeding?
Yep. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anything else under staff comments? Okay. We'll go to city council comments. Councilmember Evans?
Nothing, thanks.
Councilmember, ready?
I'm ready, thank you, yeah, thanks.
I circulated to everybody an email inviting folks to attend a bus tour through, that'll include part of Johnston as well as other communities around us on October 17th from 8:30 to 11:30 regarding housing partnerships in action, funding futures. So, it's an opportunity to learn about some of the different projects that are happening. It's sponsored by Capital Crossroads, Polk County Housing Trust Fund, and Habitat for Humanity. So, everybody, I sent it to some key staff, and I know Rose indicated that she's going to try to attend too. So, just kind of wanted to remind her that that's, that's in your email inbox. Second of all, I want to thank Councilmember Burkhart for joining myself as part of a kind of a strategic, I wouldn't, maybe not a formal strategic planning session, but a communication session that was held last Friday morning for CIWW board. And it's, Brian, as Councilman Burkhart attended as well, because alternates were invited to attend to, it was a really good opportunity for us to talk through, you know, kind of our different perspectives of the different 12-member agencies, as well as to talk through several lessons learned, I think, through, you know, through all, lots of different things that have sort of happened in the first year or so. So, appreciate Councilmember Burkhart's participation in that. I thought it was a great opportunity to hear a lot of different perspectives and I think helpful as part of that organization's work to continue to be successful. So, just wanted to pass that along as well. So, if anybody has any questions or thoughts or feedback on CIW related issues, really happy to visit about it.
Councilmember Burkhart?
With Councilmember Cope mentioning that, my announcements got shorter, but it was a great visit. I just sincerely want to wish everyone a happy homecoming this week. Johnston is abuzz with returning to the beach as our high schools and all of our schools celebrate and welcome back those who participate. My thanks already to our police who helped assist and help assist at every event that goes on for our kids, but certainly yesterday as I manned the slip-and-slide station and your police force had to help one of our students in that regard. There's plenty more activities going on this week, including a fabulous parade scheduled for Thursday. There's a movie night scheduled for Thursday right here at the town center as well. And you can obviously look forward to a fun football game as well. So, with all of those things, again, go Dragons. We're grateful for the way the school contributes to our community, and we continually hope that we can help contribute to the education and future of all of Johnston students.
Councilwoman Martin?
I have nothing, Mayor.
I have just a couple of things real quick. First of all, I appreciated Councilman Cope, you sharing the information on CIWW. I did spend some time with Tammy Madsen last week. She came out and we, we just, I gave her some feedback and some thoughts about the situation that we had involving the irrigation plan. So, that was, she was very open to hearing, hearing what I had to say, so I really do appreciate that. The home show was an amazing event on Friday. Several of us were, were able to attend to go through the shows, or through the homes in preparation for comments that I made at the home show. I realized that this was the ninth time the home show has been in Johnston. There's only one other community that had, has had the home show more than that, that's Urbendale. They've had it 11 times, and I said, we will catch up. So, if you have a chance to get out and look at the homes, you know, it's an amazing, it's an amazing property and some beautiful, beautiful homes. Give you lots of ideas for, for renovating your house, or many of them are still for sale. So, if you're thinking about sizing up, there will be, there, there, there are some really nice homes out there. The other, Toons at Twilight was last Thursday. And even though Toons at Twilight is always kind of promoted as our smaller local bands as opposed to the, the bigger bands, and we have one of those coming up yet this year, they performed from the stage here and the yard was full. The yard was full. So, word is getting out that these, these concerts that we put on during the summertime are worth people's time and people are, people are really turning out for them. The other thing, I forgot, the home show, at the home show, they did present a little award to us, and we were going to bring it and show it to you, but it is positioned out at one of the reception areas, so as you're leaving, you can see that. So, Mike, if you could send out to us in the email, the time and date for the, the reception for Deputy Chief Shipper, that would be great.
We'll get that out, yes.
Okay, great, great. That's all I have. Is there anything else for the order this evening? If not, we are adjourned.